We're recording, I'm live.
All right, welcome everyone to the February 20th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. I'm Ken Swanton, the vice chair acting for Rob tonight who is away. I guess the first thing we will do is take the role and see who we have. But, oh, I guess Stephen just came across. So, I guess I'll just call the attendance, so. Bud Shagnon, are you there?
I am here.
Patricia Pecknick?
Here.
Greg Bennet?
Yes.
Even Delisle?
Yeah.
Lynn Scow?
Here.
Here, and I am here. Ken Swanton, so we have six plus, we have Gretchen Joy, our note taker, who is also here. And Caitlin, the city planner, and I believe even. Is Andy Port also with us, I guess?
I am.
Great, all right. The first topic is we have a request for withdrawal, I believe, for the basin apparel at 19 Water Street. So I don't believe there's anybody who's here to speak on that, is there?
I'm not seeing anyone at this time, Chair.
If not, I think we should just gracefully have a motion to withdraw. Would somebody like to make the motion?
I'll make that motion, motion to withdraw V A R twenty-two dash eight for nineteen Water Street.
Wait, is there a second?
Second.
Hey, it's been moved by Mr. Delisle and seconded by Mr. Bennet. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. I guess we'll just, since it's a Zoom meeting, we'll just go down the list here. So, Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnon?
Yes.
Pecknick?
Yes.
Scow, Miss, Miss Scow?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So it is six to nothing to to withdraw. I assume that motion was to withdraw, right?
To accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yes. All right.
Correct.
So that gets us to our first public hearing. We have a sixty-eight Bromfield Street public hearing. And for that, I see the slides already up, and I assume Attorney Mead is probably ready to take the floor. Are you there?
I am, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Chair. I would have a question. So last time on this matter, Mr. Champetti, yourself, Ms. Scow, Ms. Pecknick, and Mr. Bennet sat on this matter. So, Mr. Champetti is not here, and I was wondering if either Mr. Delisle or Mr. Chagnon watched the tape and qualified to sit on, one of them qualified to sit, so there would be five members.
Yes, I'm really glad you brought that up. I should have brought that up ahead of time. I believe both of them watched the tape and were qualified, but I believe our planning department suggested that since Mr. Delisle is the more senior member and first was asked by Rob to qualify that he would be the voting member. So the voting members would therefore be the four of us who were here last time, plus Mr. Delisle.
Great, thank you very much. I just wanted to clarify that. So for the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman Costa, thirty Green Street, and Newburyport. With me this evening is Blake Wilcox, who is the manager of sixty-eight Bromfield Street LLC, Matt Langus, who is the architect on the project, and my colleague Ben Taylor. Next slide, please. So at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the addition and the amount of lot coverage and the reflection on open space, even though this was a pre-existing non-conforming lot, pre-existing non-conforming structure, and a pre-existing non-conforming use. There were some concerns by some of the members relative to the size of the addition. Other members were happy to have the four units and were supportive of the project. And so we met quite extensively over the last couple of weeks. And Blake really looked at what this project is and what the results would be depending on what the reduction could be in that addition to have some kind of meaningful reduction to address some of the members' concerns, but still have a project that works. As a result of that, even if there was a reduction of twelve inches off of that addition, it would have reduced the size of those units to something that would be not beneficial, or at least not practically workable from a marketing and sales point of view. And so in light of that, what Blake has done along with Matt is reduce the width of the proposed addition by seven feet from the sideline. And now it pinches in six inches from the existing structure of both of its connections. The number of units is reduced from four to three units, which reduces the footprint by a total of one hundred and seventy-two point forty-three square feet. The side yard setback is improved, even though ten feet is required, it's improved from twenty point two to twenty-seven point two. The lot coverage is reduced from thirty-nine point five to thirty-six point four, where forty is allowed. And the open space increases from the existing, which is twenty-six two over what we had proposed, which is thirty-four two, which is now at forty-four two, where the max is, or the minimum open space is forty percent. There is also a reduction from eight to six parking spaces, given the reduction in the number of units. So with that, if you can go to the next slide, please. So you can see here where the addition has pulled back in the, in the, kind of the crux of the L, if you will, or that corner in the back. You can see it's pinched in a little bit, six inches on each side, so it doesn't extend beyond the existing structure. You can see the, the larger open space area on this elevation. And what has happened is the egress in the back has changed. There's kind of a walkout patio or stair, stair landing area. Both of those are under three feet, so they don't count towards the sideline setback. Next slide, please. So with this, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, so he can go over some of the changes that occurred in the elevations.
Good evening, everyone. Matt Landis, Scott Brown Architect, forty-eight Market Street, Newburyport. This elevation doesn't, you can't really see many updates. There, there were a few opportunities for us to shift some windows because we had eliminated second floor decks and, and second floor doors, so it allowed us a little bit more play to, to balance out some of the windows here. So a first floor window on the left side of the, the lower elevation here was adjusted to be a taller window, but other than that, I don't believe there are any updates. Next slide, please. So here's again another view that is probably the most of, or one of the views is probably the most affected. The addition is completely gone from this view, and again, it sort of allowed us a little bit more flexibility from a D C O D standpoint to to balance out the windows and make them a bit more symmetrical where we could. Next slide, please. So part of this process was going back to the drawing board, you know, with some of these updates, and I think what was driving that was in order to cut a significant portion off of the, the massing of the addition, keeping four units was, it was just not possible. It was creating bedrooms that were either functionally too small or, or just not comfortable, that, you know, seven, eight feet is just not a comfortable bedroom. So going down to three units just allowed us much more flexibility to move some spaces around. So from this view, you know, the, the left corner and the right corner are set in about six inches, you know, six inches back, you know, on the left side, and then six inches to the left on the right. So in doing that, we're, we're able to cut just about thirty percent off of the addition. So that's seven feet. What it allowed us to do was decrease the, the actual addition footprint from about six hundred and forty square feet down to four hundred and fifty square foot, just in the footprint of how it is placed on the lot. And so this is one of the more affected elevations where we remove some exterior decks, remove the doors, again, allowing us some, some flexibility in the D C O D and moving some windows around. Next slide, please. So again, here, you know, the, this was previously a, a large door with a rooflet overhang, but because of the, the flexibility and the unit layout changes, it gave us sort of more of a better opportunity to have a fresh pass at this, and you know, this elevation, I think blends a little nicer into the existing as the, you know, as opposed to the previous presentation. So as, as part of, of doing this and doing this change, we, we still kept all of the existing materials of the previous presentation, so seven-eighths divided lights, simulated divided lights, black windows, you know, still working with hardy, hardy plank trim, I'm sorry, hardy plank clapboard and siding and PVC water composite trim. So all of these materials that were from the previous presentation, they still apply and still carry into into the, the updates that we have in front of you tonight. So I'd be happy to jump into those in a bit more detail if there's any questions, but if not, I would turn the presentation back over to Karen Mead to close it out.
Thank you, Matt. So if you can go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. So I'll just go through the criteria, maybe not as great a detail as I did last time, given the reduction in the size, but so most important, of course, is this continues to be a multifamily structure, and therefore there can't be any new or intensification of existing non-conformities, and there are none. In fact, as I said earlier, we improved some of the existing conditions. The next is whether the proposed change will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure or use. Here, the footprint has been reduced in the addition, and the addition is now tucked back into the back corner. The, of course, the applicant can't change the existing non-conformings regarding lot area and front yard setbacks and, and has improved the open space, so that's compliant and meets the lot coverage requirements under the multifamily structure dimension requirements, which apply to this lot. The intensity, the use is reduced by one unit. And as a result, the intensity, the parking is also reduced, and so where before the applicant was already cleaning up a lot of that hot top running around that building, it's now cleaned up even more. And the building is receiving a major renovation and a much-needed facelift, which will have a dramatic improvement on the neighborhood. Additionally, the addition, as I said, tucks in and is not really seen from either Prospect or Bromfield Street. Next slide, please. And again, we just want to kind of show you this again. This building is not unusual for multifamily buildings in this area. And it continues to be now even almost, you know, more the same of the other multifamily buildings in the area. And so it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in that regard. In the next slide, please. And again, just to show you, obviously, this face is going to change dramatically with the cleanup of the windows and the siding and the, the trim work and doors and entries that are going to be proposed. Next slide, please. And same way on Bromfield Street, again, you won't have that sea of asphalt running all the way around the building. There'll be much nicer landscaping towards the back. The parking will be towards the street. And it will sit much more friendly, so to speak, on the lot and be softer as opposed to this hard pavement. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the board, but we believe the board can find that the proposed request for special permit and modifications to this pre-existing non-conforming use of structure are certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure and use.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Mead. At this point, the next step in the hearing is to take any comments, either for or against, or any questions from any members of the public. Usually we'd start with the public that are in the room, but we are all Zoomed tonight, so if anybody out there on the attendance list wishes to speak, hit the raise your hand button and you will be identified and given a chance. And I don't see any, so we'll move on from that portion of the hearing to questions from the board, and we have six board members that are all qualified and can ask questions. And would somebody like to begin? I don't any of you in particular?
I have a question.
Sure, Lynn, Lynn Scow.
Yeah, hi, how are you? I just I know that last time that we spoke that the neighbors seemed to be in favor of, of the proposed project. And so I don't know why they wouldn't be in favor as you've, as you've tailored it now, but I'm just curious if you've had a chance to talk to any of the neighboring properties owners about the revised project.
I think the answer is yes. Blake is on this call. Blake, if I'm incorrect, you can correct me, but I'm pretty sure that the weekend after, the last meeting after Blake and Matt had kind of worked on what they were going to do, Blake had an opportunity to talk to some of the neighbors. And the answer was, yeah, they were certainly pleased with the changes.
Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I'll jump in. Yeah, so that was the case. So I, I did reach out, especially to the director butter, which is sixty-four Bromfield, and walked Dave through my proposal. And I, I, to be totally frank, I think he was very happy that we pushed it back seven feet and, you know, so I was very sensitive to that and all of the other neighbors I've spoken to, again, I did go door to door and knock and talk to everyone originally. Most people were like, it's going to be better, just, just, yeah, it's great. We don't really care, but Dave, who is the most impacted, based on my conversations with him, I don't want to speak for him, but he, he, he was, in my opinion, very happy with my proposal to shrink down the addition seven feet and reduce a unit.
Great, thank you.
Lynn, do you have any other questions?
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Would, would anybody else like to ask any questions?
I'm raising my hand.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so I love that this photo is right there because the fence that's going to be placed behind the two parking spaces here on Bromfield side, rather than behind the four spaces, is so significant an improvement and how that the space is going to read from Bromfield. And so I'm just curious, and it's an idle curiosity, not a consequential curiosity, about fencing materials or style.
So I'll jump in on this one if I can. So we, as a standard, I am a big fan of cedar fences. If you look at any of our projects on the South End, it's always cedar. So we use, we, we will be using cedar fences anywhere we install new fences or gates of this property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Pecknick?
Not at all.
How about the gentleman this evening? Do you guys have any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions.
But?
No questions.
I guess my only questions are you had mentioned in the last meeting that you were a big fan of permeable surfaces, and you're going to use permeable surfaces in your driveways and things. Are you still? I did not notice that in the plans, as, but many times people don't say it on the plans, but is that still your intent?
Absolutely. Again, yeah, that's something I actually do believe in, just my own personal standpoint, that it's better for the kind of local surrounding. We don't get the runoff. We don't get as much sort of puddling of water and freezing. So, yeah, anywhere we do any hardscapes on any of our projects, we, we do, we do use permeable surfaces. And that, and that is the intent for this project as well. All hardscape surfaces, including parking areas, will be permeable.
Okay, thank you. And the other, last time you'd also talked about the plan for the sidewalks, the the current sidewalks you'd be upgrading, the one on Bromfield Street, I think you mentioned brick. And we had a conversation about the one on Prospect Street, and I guess the city council insists on either brick or concrete, and you're going with concrete on Prospect. Is that still your plan?
So, yeah, like yourself, I also walk, you know, the, the South End quite a bit, and as, you know, I put brick wherever I can because I enjoy it. I enjoy looking at it. So that is still the intent to brick that, that section of street on Bromfield. And on the Prospect Street side, I will work with DPS. My, you know, I would like to do hot top there, but if they're set on concrete, that's, I, I'll do the concrete. I have no problem with that whatsoever. So whatever DPS wants, we will do.
Yeah, I think we heard in the last meeting, the requirement in the historic district is either brick or concrete, and they get a waiver from that for hot top. You have to get a waiver, city council is, wasn't that correct, Andy, if you're still plugged in here? Maybe you're not.
Yeah.
So I think that kind of speaks for itself.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I, if, yeah, again, I'm happy to commit to the concrete. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so brick on Bromfield, concrete on Prospect. Those are my only questions. So if there are no other questions, then we move to the deliberations point, and even the only five are voting, all six can deliberate. So who would like to begin?
I would like to, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah, so I think this is a great example of how the developer can get a lot out of a property that he's putting a lot into. And the city can get what it needs in terms of a rehabilitation of this property that will really contribute to the street scape, but without the amount of new massing that would really tip the scores, scales, tip the scales on a corner lot. I think that's what I was really concerned about a couple of weeks ago. I appreciate Scott Brown's sensitivity to the district. And in addition to the decreased massing, among the improvements, the plan that I appreciate are, as Attorney Mead mentioned, the addition has stepped back, you know, a half a foot. I think removing the decks and staircases and adding the covered entryway and the landing is terrific. The use is being de-intensified, that's been mentioned. The fence makes a big difference on Bromfield. Again, only those two parking spaces. And, well, somebody was talking, architect was talking about the windows, that full window on the Prospect Street elevation is so much more coherent with just the overall fenestration. And the same with moving one of the windows from the second floor to the first floor on the Bromfield Street side and installing the second basement window. To me, that really de-emphasizes the massing. And the north elevation windows, too, I think they create a better sense of scale. Same is true on the west. So in my view, this is now a successful plan for the city as well as for the applicant, and I appreciate the work that went into this redesign.
Thank you, Ms. Pecknick. Would somebody else like to deliberate?
Sure, I will. I'll go if no one else will. Yeah, I'd also like to say I appreciate the willingness of, of the petitioner to make the changes and, and respond to the concerns the board expressed in the, in the last meeting. I know that we all had some concerns about the massing, given that while it is multifamily, it is in the middle of the R two zone. So I think that with that said, I think it's a lovely project, and I would be in favor of supporting it.
Thank you, Ms. Scow. Someone else?
Mr. Swanton, I would like to deliberate on this matter.
Yes.
Thank you. Coming in late to this, this process for this application and listening to the to the last meeting yesterday, I was very pleased when I opened the the file to see the new plans and thought that it was incredibly excellent improvement over, over the prior plans. And I think that, you know, clearly this plan as configured now meets the two-pronged criteria of nine B two A or a B two B, excuse me. And furthermore, I think that for Mr. Wilcox and Mr. Langus to come back with, with such a plan shows, you know, a commitment to Newburyport and a a civic mindedness that really helps to move these things along and make for a good hearing and a good outcome. So I can completely support that.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. How about Mr. Bennet or Mr. Shagnon? Who would like to go next?
I, I can go, Mr. Shagnon. I have to agree with Mr. Delisle. I, I also, after listening to the previous meeting's tape and watching it, was, was happy to see the changes that were made. Once again, the applicant, you know, heard the board, heard the concerns, I think of you know, the board members and at least one person that had called in that was, had a problem with the massing. So I, I would also support this with the changes and, and my hats off to the, the applicant for, for making such changes. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg, would you like to comment?
Sure. I obviously supported this project in its first iteration. I found that it met the high legal standard, or actually the low bar that has to be hurdled with respect to special permit for non-conformity. So I found the last project at those standards. This certainly does. I will say that our community, it, it's a shame that, that we've lost one rental, another rental unit here, and I find that somewhat distressing, but I support this.
Thank you. I, I too support this, you know, to just directly address that point, Greg, that you brought up. I mean, this used to be four rental units that were much more affordable than what you're going to, we're going to see, whether it's three or four units. So depending on what kind of housing you think we're really short of in this town. I mean, I, I don't know, it's, it's, to me, that's a different argument. But getting back to the new proposal, I kind of concur with a lot of what's already been said. I particularly like the fact that the addition is no longer so visible from Bromfield Street and has even been set back a little bit. And thank you for being sensitive to that. I think it dramatically improves the massing of the building in a very congested neighborhood that the city council moved a few years ago to downzone. So thank you very much for listening, and I, I can wholeheartedly support your revised proposal. And with that, I guess we are ready for a motion for a vote. Would somebody like to move this?
I'll make the motion. It's a motion to approve the special permit for non-conformities for sixty-eight Bromfield Street, Z N C two-three dash two, with the special condition that the applicant shall replace all city-owned sidewalks actually adjoining the project property according to the Department of Public Services specifications and install one street tree on the Prospect Street side of the project. Said improvements shall be completed prior to occupancy or proposals shall be submitted to the zoning administrator indicating proposed completion schedule.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Now we move to a vote. I think I'll just go down the list here of little pictures on the screen, so Mr. Bennet, how do you vote?
Yes.
The Scow?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Ms. Pecknick?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and that's five. So it is approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Hey, thank you all very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. The next thing we have on our agenda is the proposal for Seven Norman Avenue. And do we have someone to present that?
Yes, Braden Monaco here, representing M F G Ventures.
Good evening, Braden. You have the floor.
Well, nothing better than having the floor. Here we go. So again, Braden Monaco, M F G Ventures, my, my partner and I, Chris Ferron, he's here on the call as well, but I'll try to do most of the speaking for us this evening. Our goal tonight is to move forward with the project again at Seven Norman Ave. It's a property we purchased a few months back, a very distressed property there on Norman Ave. It was, at the time of purchase, it was vacant, and there were actually some people living in it that were not supposed to be. But the goal tonight is we're looking for special permit. Obviously, currently there are two non-conformities. There's the lot size, a lot size that's just under the requirement there in R two, as well as the frontage. So the front yard is a little narrower than the requirements. And then obviously, the home being in such disrepair will be torn down, and the goal would be to replace it with a new single-family structure. So we can go to the next slide if you don't mind. This is just a quick picture of the proposed drawing or the proposed rendering for the new home that would sit there on the property. Next slide, please. So obviously, we're looking at, as it stands right now, the, the property does have quite a few non-conformities. It does sit too close to the side setback, as well as it is too close to the front setback, as well as the As well as the frontage and lot size. Our goal with the property will be to bring the property, the house within all requirements in regards to setbacks. So correct any of the non-conformities that exist on the property as it relates to where the home sits on the property. The only two that we unfortunately cannot correct would be the lot size and the the frontage of the property. So the new construction will meet all current, again, current zoning setbacks, heights requirements. Will sit within the confines of the the city requirements. Next slide, please. So the, just for reference sake, I'm sure you guys are all aware, but just for reference sake, obviously Norman Ave comes off of North Atkinson, off of Low Street. So we just wanted to give you kind of some context as to where that property sits currently. You can see a little further of an aerial and then a little zoomed in. So you can see the current home sitting really right there on that side. If you're looking at the house, the left side, it's really right on the property line. Our goal is to pull the home within, again, those setbacks and be well inside or inside those ten-foot requirements. Next slide, please. Within with the home build, obviously, here's kind of your, the zoning metrics that we you guys, you require. You'll see that we we fall within all of the requirements other than that frontage being required ninety and ninety feet in R2. We are at eighty. And then there's a ten thousand square, ten thousand square foot lot size. We're just under that by about fifty square feet. So I think we've done a good job with the proposed plan to build the home within all the setbacks, even though the the property itself is narrower and a little bit smaller than what's required in R2. So you'll notice that our height requirements are well under the the maximum height requirements, lot coverage as well, open space. So really, we're 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 right in the the wheelhouse of what you guys are looking for in regards to the the metrics and making sure our property conforms to the city requirements. My next slide. The existing home, I I I laugh because this picture, every time I look at it, makes the house seem a lot nicer than it really is. The current home that sits on the property was built in nineteen forty-seven. We did go through historic prior to this meeting and was passed through there. But this is what the house looks like currently. It's just over a thousand square feet, really nothing that could be used for the modern family. Next slide. So again, here's our our front proposed elevation. You know, just from from a view perspective, really trying to meet the modern family needs of 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 Newburyport, bringing in younger families. You know, trying to give them what they need for for their growing, their growing families. Next slide, please. I would just go through the the side elevations. Here's that left side elevation, again, meeting all of the requirements from a height perspective as well as the setbacks. Next. And your right elevation, same thing. Next slide. And then your rear. So the rear just have a porch off the back slider and have plenty of backyard. Obviously, within the requirements and open space, et cetera. Next slide, please. Just showing here, it's kind of hard to see, but I'm sure you guys had a chance to take a look at it ahead of time. But the way the house is going to be proposed will sit again within all of the required setbacks and actually improve all but the, all of the non-conformities that we have control over, I guess is the best way to say it. So next slide, please. This is the neighboring house. I just wanted, from a massing perspective, just wanted you to understand that some of the other houses in this, in the neighborhood have been modified over the years. And this is the one directly to the right of us. We've had lengthy conversations with these homeowners as well as multiple people have come to us. The few times we've been on the property, every time we've had at least one neighbor come by and thank us for doing whatever we're gonna do to the property because it's been really an eyesore to the the community. Next slide, please. And these are two other properties that sit within the neighborhood. So the one on Low Streets, it's actually directly behind us. And then Murphy Ave is just down the street, you know, a walking distance away there. So just to give you an idea of what's kind of been going on a little bit in that neighborhood, I'm sure you guys are well aware. But just from a, from a context perspective, from a massing perspective, et cetera. Next slide, please. Already been working with the city in regards to the tree and sidewalk ordinances and and updates. Having lengthy conversations around what's going to be required. I do believe there's gonna be some trees that need to be removed, sidewalks repaired. Trees added, not a problem for us at all. Obviously, improving the visual effect and and the the functional effect of the the neighborhood is of utmost importance for when you're building a home for for families that are coming in to to live in that home and enjoy the neighborhood for long, many years to come. And then again, we did go through the historical commission. I believe that was last week or the week before in regards to getting a waiver for the demo delay, deeming that the home has no significant, historical significance. So that's really all I have for you tonight. Again, the goal for us is to remove a really detrimental property to the to the neighborhood and put something in place that's going to be more beneficial for obviously everybody around it and bring a young family to to the community.
Okay, thank you, Brayden, for your presentation. At this point, we open it up to anybody in the audience. If there is anybody, they look like they're all with you, Brayden. But if there's anybody else who would like to say anything, either in support or against, or ask a question, just raise your hand and you'll be recognized. Seeing none, we will go to the board, questions from the board. And on this one, we have the only one of our alternately voting, and the way it's been rotating, correct me if I'm wrong, Caitlin, but I believe it's Lynn's turn tonight, right, Caitlin?
That's correct.
Okay, so the voting members on this application will be Caitlin, will be Lynn, myself, Stephen Delisle, Bud Shagnan, and Greg Manick. So, but all of us can deliberate. So would anybody like to ask the first question of the applicant?
I'll take a crack at it. Mr. Monaco, could you just go go through for us the the material choices that you'll be using, windows, siding, et cetera?
Oh yeah, so from a window perspective, there'll be, there'll be vinyl windows, obviously meeting all all requirements and code requirements. Siding will be hardy siding as well as composite PVC trim throughout the whole house. So no vinyl, no aluminum, nothing of that sort.
Okay, and and for the that sort of board and batten part on the on the first floor, that'll, that'll be some sort of rot-resistant material as well.
Yeah, so so I don't know, full disclosure, we have a buyer that's interested in the property already that approached us, a young family from another part of the country, actually, which was really exciting to bring them home to where they're from. They might get rid of it, but everything on the house will be rot-resistant. So that would originally planned was was also hardy board and batten. But whatever goes on the exterior will be all rot-resistant and composite material of some sort.
Understood. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Who would like to go next?
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so the existing square footage is a thousand one hundred and fifteen. And what is the proposed finished square footage of the house?
The proposed finished square footage as it sits right now is just right above three thousand four square feet. That's where, that's what we have currently.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peknik. Would anybody else like?
My quick point there, I mean, the goal always when we, when we're building these for young families is to try to get a two and a half, four bedroom, two and a half bath, as that seems. What we've, what we've found in the last couple of projects we've had is that people are, most people are working from home, trying to have an office and a spare bedroom because two people are working from home and having kids and such. So we're trying to, trying to maximize as much as we can without you know, making it too detrimental from a size and scale perspective, for sure.
Are there any other questions from the board?
This is Mr. Shagnan. I had a quick question. I see on the the print that's up right now, it looks like the top of the roof, the top, the ridge is, is that thirty-two feet? Is that what I'm seeing?
I believe so. Let me zoom in here quick. I can't, I was, I was running off of the thirty-two and the, yeah, and then the twenty-seven is the average grade.
Okay, so twenty-seven is, is that what the the number we use for the mid-roof line? Okay, so it's twenty-seven and thirty-two peak. Okay, that's all I have for a question. Thank you, Mr. Swanton.
Thank you, Mr. Shagnan. How about Mr. Bennet? Do you have any questions?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
And I've already forgotten. Ms. Scow, did, did we ask?
Yeah, I have just one question. You mentioned that you talked to the neighbors and they're excited that something's going to be done with the existing property. Have they seen the plans for the new property?
One of the neighbors that we we touched, we showed them originally, and then we showed them the other two properties that we had done in the past as a point of reference, to kind of give them what our style and all of that was. So they've, they've seen a a version of it, not the final with a couple of the the roofline change, not the roofline, but the small covering roofs that you see on the front there and such, but they've seen this, the size and the scale of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, yeah, Ms. Scow kind of got it, my question, which was you say you showed it to those neighbors. What was their response?
The the initial response from everybody was thanking us truthfully for just doing something with the property because it's been abandoned and run down for years now. I guess it was stuck in some sort of a divorce situation where the property was just sitting there and and broken windows, things of that nature. There was actually some squatters and stuff at some point. So they've all been open, open to it. They've been appreciative of us coming in and actually doing something with the property because it's, it's obviously detrimental to their views and to their, to know, to their property values as well.
I guess my other related question is, I I went down Norman Street recently and there's like, I as I was driving by, I counted like twenty houses, of which two were, had two stories. The rest of them were all smaller, single-family houses. And so I was just wondering if any of the neighbors have commented upon, you know, did they have a concern that this is kind of a big house going into their neighborhood of small homes?
No one's vocal, no one's vocalized it. Truthfully, one of the the biggest issues with this neighborhood, and this is something that I think is gonna come up quite a bit with the historical commission, is that a lot of these houses are now deemed in that seventy-five-year look-back period. And they're all actually, none of them have foundations. They're all sitting on steel column, steel girders with with pileup pilings as as or footings as supports. So there's not a lot you can do to go up on them. So a lot of them have gone out the backs and such. Quite a few have mentioned that they're interested in selling over the a period of time, you know, they're looking to move or they're they're aging out. Understand that their properties are not, you know, meet the needs of a modern family. So no one has localized a concern about it. I think more people have understood why they haven't gone up on them, because it's been a much larger undertaking that a lot of the homeowners can can take on themselves.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm not trying to be critical because I mean, if you had another fifty square feet, you would and another ten feet of frontage, you wouldn't be here because this would be a conforming building. So it's, I mean, this is not the South End. This is a you know, this is, this is a much more spread out neighborhood with bigger lots and more room to work. And you, so anyway, I I'll get into my my deliberations when we get there. But so I have no other questions. So did anybody else on the board have any questions before we move to deliberations? Okay, so who would like to kick off deliberations?
This is Mr. Shagnan. I can start. I I think the application is is wonderful. I mean, although we're losing you know, a cute little home, I do understand it's in a state of disrepair. And I think what the applicant has chosen to replace it with is is a good-looking building. I'm not so worried about the the fact that it's two-story. I think it's hard actually nowadays to have a one-story home on this such, such a small footprint. And I do appreciate that the applicant has shrunk the overall size of the building so that it it's it's more in keeping with the the setbacks for the side lot and front, front yard. So with that said, I I like the application and I can support it.
Thank you, Mr. Shagnan. Who would like to go next?
I'll go, Mr. Mr. Chair, if that's okay?
Yep.
Thank you. I I'll concur with Mr. Shagnan on this one. I think that, you know, the application and the presentation were were good. It it looks like a nice design. And I I do agree with Mr. Shagnan that, you know, you're you're losing a smaller home, replacing it with something much larger. But this is a fairly good-sized lot. We're not talking about a small lot. We're not getting into lot coverage problems. As the applicant noted, everything with respect to this proposal is conforming except the things that can't be controlled. And I I do have some familiarity with this neighborhood, having grown up in Newburyport. I had a friend who lived there when we were kids and Mr. Monaco, his description of how those homes are built in that neighborhood is is not far from my experience. I I, you know, it it would be a tough, tough thing to to sort of have a traditional rehab with with what what is there. So I I I think that this meets the the two-pronged standard here for a special permit for non-conformity, and I can support the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Who would like to go next?
I'll go. I I would concur with my colleagues. I think that it it does meet the standard needed by us. That it doesn't create any new non-conformities and it is not substantially detrimental, more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I do think, I appreciate that you talk to the neighbors and that they don't seem to have an issue with with going up. And like you said, maybe that's something that they would like to do under different circumstances. So and I do appreciate that you you change the setbacks to make it more in keeping with with the requirements of the city. And I think that'll be better for the neighbors not to be so close. So I would support this plan.
Thank you, Ms. Scow. Mr. Bennet or Ms. Peknik?
Yes, I have something to say. I, to the applicant, you know, the conversation that you had with the historical commission, I thought was very interesting as they looked at, you know, the history and scale of the neighborhood. And I may have been as surprised as you were by the intensity of that conversation and how long it went on. I I would have expected it for it to be unanimous. I don't have a problem at all with what you propose here. But I do, just for the sake of of process, want to say that in general, so you're arguing that the height of the new structure fits within the context of sort of same-scale houses. And I looked at nine Norman Street and it, you know, it's been altered up to nineteen twenty-four square feet. But then, you know, you did have to go to the other streets, Low and Murphy, to find things like that. Those are really the exceptions. I mean, fourteen Norman is seventeen fifty-two. Twelve is fourteen fifty-two, eight is thirteen thirty-seven. Six has an addition in the back, but they're all sort of single-story, one and a half-story things. Mr. Shagnan used the word cute. So do I. Number eleven is tiny. It's only seven hundred and seventy-six square feet. Number five is seven sixty-eight. So I agree with Mr. Swan. It's important to look at that whole context of modest one-story or one and a half-story houses. And so going from that sort of average height of eleven, twelve, thirteen feet over twenty-seven, I think is significant. And I'm not saying that because I, I object to the plan because I don't. I'm just saying it on principle because I think that we need to see the whole full context perspective and and realize, you know, this, this will be an improvement for the neighbors, but it, three thousand feet is uncharacteristic of the street. On the other hand, these are these post-war, a lot of prefab houses. And I think you're right that they're not long for this world and that this is sort of what's gonna be happening to the neighborhood in the, in the future. So I I don't not support it. I mean, I would support it, but I just want to get all that out.
Thank you for both sides of that. Mr. Mr. Bennet?
Yeah, I can support the project. I think it's a significant improvement over the small home there. I think that home is, I think everybody's alluded to is, I think it's probably outlived its usefulness. I don't think there would be much of a chance to see that home rehabbed and renovated in its present size and configuration. So this, I believe, is a rehabbed and renovated in its present uh size and configuration. So this, I believe, is a uh market improvement. Uh, it is, of course, bigger than the other homes in the neighborhood. However, I think it's probably a harbinger of what's to come here. So uh and it's uh well-designed and uh the fact that it uh is more consistent with our dimensional controls is a positive. So I can support this uh.
Yeah, and to 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 finish up, I concur with my colleagues. I too can support this. I think a lot of people already said it. I thought thank Mr. Delisle for specifying the two prongs of the of this zoning ordinance that we have to follow. Uh, and I think it's also been said that you're cleaning up a lot of the setbacks in here. I was concerned about the size of the house, given the street, but given that a lot of these little houses probably aren't um, you know, they weren't constructed to be here forever. Um, and to me, very significantly, this is a these are pretty good sized lots. They're very close to being conforming. With just a teeny bit more, you wouldn't be here. Uh, this would be a conforming building. Um, so I can support this application. So with that, we uh, we need a motion. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Uh, it's Mr. Shagnon. I can make a motion uh to approve, approve the special permit for non-conformities for seven Norman Avenue, ZNC twenty-three dash three. With the special condition that the applicant shall replace all city-owned sidewalks actually adjoining the project property in accordance with the Department of Public Services specifications and install one street tree in coordination with the Department of Public Services. Said improvements shall be completed prior to occupancy or a proposal shall be submitted to the zoning administrator indicating proposed completion schedule.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second uh the motion.
Mr. Bennet has seconded the motion. Um, so now we will vote. So I'll just go down the list in the other direction. Mr. Bennet, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnon?
Yes.
Ms. Cow?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
And I vote yes as well. So that's five in the affirmative. The motion passes. Thank you, uh, Braden.
Thank you all very much for your time this evening. We appreciate your feedback and your approval.
You're welcome and good luck with your project.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Yeah. All right. So the next thing on our agenda is to approve the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? And would somebody like to make any comments or suggestions or modifications or a motion to approve? Perhaps somebody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion, okay. I will move to approve the minutes for our meeting on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
And a second from someone?
I'll second.
You have that.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Bennet and seconded by Ms. Cow. Um, oh, uh, well, we'll just this, Ms. Cow, do you vote yes?
Yes.
Mr. Shagnon?
Yes.
Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Mr. Bennet?
Yes.
Ms. Technic?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Six to nothing. It is unanimous. Um, now we are at to the point of the agenda where it says other updates from the chair or the planning director. We'll start with the planning director.
Uh, nothing in particular, but if there are members have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for the planning director?
I had, I had one question. It's, it's probably uh just semantics. Um, I noticed that the Butters list for sixty-eight Bromfield was much smaller than for Norman. Um, and the South End, and when I look at that building, you know, has way more homes around it. And when I read the um the definition of an butter in our ordinances, it's, it's kind of uh left up to the eye of the reader. Um, is that, is that something that's looked at more sternly than than uh? I mean, it just, uh, the the town I came from, our Butters list was anything that touched the the applicant's home within two hundred feet. Now, I was in a much, much bigger town with, you know, half acre minimums. But it just seemed like such a small list for sixty-eight Bromfield. There were only seven, I think. And that's the South End, and it is quite dense, as you know.
Yeah, no, that's a, it's a good thing to look at. Um, I I hadn't myself taken a look at this one. Uh, we certainly can check just in general. We defer to the assessors' office that prepares the Butters list. Um, but we can certainly go back and and check and see whether or not the methodology makes sense in terms of the radius they use and the property owners that they pulled in. Um, you know, like, let you know if there's anything unusual that we found there, but generally speaking, um, we have found them to be reliable, you know, for doing that. But it's a good question you raised and, you know, noting the number of lots, like you said. Um, we can take a look at the Caitlin, and I can take a look at that and see if there's any question or hesitation on our part there.
Uh, you you know, if you read the 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 definition of an butter in our ordinance i- is is strange in that it says any property that touches it, including any properties separated by a street. So when, so when you take a corner lot, I mean, the entire, like, the other, the come, the 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 total other side of Bromfield, one could argue, isn't a butter. And there was only one home on the other side. It seems like anyone that would be that could even see the house would be called on a butter.
Um, well, I don't know if I'd go that far, but but uh, but definitely, I think to your first point, uh, that's definitely something we should take a look at just to be sure. I don't know. You know, just off the top of my head, seeing um something that may may seem like an inconsistency across a street where one looks like it's um you know, could be treated that way, and the other one for some reason is not. That doesn't make sense to me, I guess, and I'd want to take a look at both the map and the listing that they had. Uh, particularly the map, obviously. Um, but um, but I think you raise a valid point, which is that we should be encompassing, and I typically in the past, when I've talked with the assessors here and in other communities, we've tried to be a little bit, um, you know, uh uh sort of out of abundance of caution, including a lot or two more, if there's any doubt about the exact, you know, delineation of, say, the three hundred foot radius or whatnot. Um, so that we don't run into, you know, a situation of of that inadequate notice. But again, we certainly, you know, it sounds like in this case, you just double check that one in particular. Um, but if you see other ones like this, obviously, we'd want to know as well, and we can call up the assessors on that as well. Um, I don't know in this instance that 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 would necessarily call for revisiting, you know, the whole process and whatnot, but it definitely is something we'd want to um address to your exact point.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting we we revisit it for that project. It's just if I, if I were to do the old radius rule, you know, any, any building within, say, fifty feet, we left off three homes, fifty feet. I mean, most lots are bigger than fifty feet wide. Um, Bromfield's fifty feet across, so um, you know, anything.
Yeah, we'll definitely check this one. Yeah. Um, it it's a very valid point. I think you raised. We'll definitely double check it and um Caitlin and I can circle back to let you know what we found there.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
So Andy, I I could, I think it's a very interesting test case that's brought up here. If, could you please copy the entire board when you send, send back what you find?
Oh, yeah, definitely. Uh, and I actually, and I think uh maybe it should go without saying, but um, I I think if should we find something that we feel like is for any reason systemic as far as the the methodology that they use when they're developing the Butters list or doing the map. Um, we can obviously summarize that for you as well, and we'd want to confirm that detail. Uh, these things come up very rarely where there's a question there about the Butters list per se. Um, sometimes we, more often what I have heard over time has been someone says, well, I'm not on the Butters list. I didn't get noticed, and we go back to the Butters list, and they are in fact on it. Um, you know, and presumably then, you know, going back to records, did you get noticed? But um, here, where there's a question about the radius or um how many properties were including, we certainly do not want to have inadequate notice. And um, as was pointed out by, you know, member, the um, the National Register Historic District is a pretty dense area, so um, there's a fair number of Butters that could be pulled into play. So we certainly want to, don't want to see the assessors' office giving under notice uh to it on the list that they give us. But again, given that we get the list from them, we can double check it, circle back and let you know what we find both for this one, but also if there's anything else that we think should be adjusted in the protocol they're using.
And and just to follow up on that, I assume when we look at the the files that are um on the website for the zoning board of appeals meeting, and there's an Butters list there, I'm assuming that's the certified Butters list. So if there are seven, the assessors' office has said that's the seven.
Right, you're referring to the uploaded assessors' uh Butters list, right? Yeah, yep, yep.
Okay, and and the the reason I'm asking is a neighbor of sixty-eight Bromfield asked me why they weren't on the Butters list, and they are literally fifty-five feet away. And I said, I have no idea. That is strange to me, but I'll ask.
Yeah, no, I mean, definitely just from your description, I want to take a look at the list and the map and and see um if there's any thing that's uh that needs to be addressed there. And uh, obviously, more importantly, maybe if it's a systemic or a thing, or if there's anything that was amiss, you know, or a gap that was for some reason, you know, a one-off, but um, you know, it's it's a valid point, and we'll, we'll double check that here and let you know we'll be fine.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions uh for Andy or Caitlin? Uh, I just want to bring up one quick thing, which is um I think among the board members tonight, I think only Stephen and I were on the board when we used to meet in the council chambers before the pandemic. Uh, and in those days, we would not go around the table in the same order ever, for every topic. And I tried it tonight just to see how it would work just to kind of on our two hearings, just to rather than always ask the same person to speak first, second, third, to see who would like to speak first. And I'm just curious for any feedback, either now or you could let me know, or Rob will probably be chairing the next meeting anyway, but but I think it's I don't know, I've often wondered it would we be better to go back to the way it used to be, uh, when we would just be a little more, um, let people who really want to say something first, give them a chance. I don't know. And any thoughts? Or was this a pain?
I prefer, I prefer it this way because sometimes I would like to listen first, and other times I want to run out of the gate more quickly. And I think it can, when we sit in order and go in order, it can seem a little, little stilted. So I preferred the way it was handled this evening.
Okay, well, I, I'm just curious because uh I just tried some bill differently. We had two hearings. Uh, all right, I don't have anything else. So with that, I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Bye, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thanks, Pat.